I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Clark, please call a row.
Carol Lombardi.
Present.
May I have called in advance and advise you wouldn't be here tonight? Mr. Canel?
Here.
Mrs. Vada?
Here.
Mrs. Bartamou?
Here.
Before present, we have a forum, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I'm going to move on to public comment, community comment. Let me just see how many people are there. If I could limit the comments to three minutes. I'd appreciate it and please, you know, I don't mean to insult anybody, but if we could have no insults or personal attacks, I will not cut you off for anything that you'll say. So, you know, please just keep it. Please no personal attacks or insults. So, moving on, let's start with public comment. These are agenda items. Mr. Clifford?
Mike Clifford, four eighty-nine Black Plain Road. I just wanted to speak to two of your items on the agenda. The APRA policy and the, we'll look at the first one, and I don't know if it's in the policy itself, but I've complained a number of times over the years with regard to filing APRA requests. And you're, every other department in town, you can email the APRA request and the ministry requires you to drop it off or mail it. I don't like mailing it because it sometimes it can take five days to get from here to Forestale, for God's sake. So rather than chance it, I always like to drop it off, but many times I'll come over and there either is nobody here at this time of day or somebody's left early or there's an unscheduled, you know, conference day or whatever, and you can't get access to the building. It just happened again last week and I came at two thirty in the afternoon and it's an open business hours, but nobody answered anything. So rather than make, and also in addition to that, when you do come over, you have to stand out in the cold and wait in the door, wait in the snow and rain until somebody comes to the door. And it's not, it's just unnecessary, totally unnecessary. I mean, you can email a complaint into the Attorney General's office, a whole complaint, not just, not just in, and a request for information. So if email is good enough for them, it should be good enough for the school system. You should be making it as easy as possible for people to access the records and the information that they're looking for, not as difficult as possible. And I feel that's, that's what's happening here because it is, it does sometimes, I don't think of it until the end of the day and then it's too late to come over because it's already after three thirty. But I think the town has a policy where, you know, you can just email them in and I wish the school department would adopt the same policy. Not that hard, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to community comments, these are items that are not on the agenda. Joe Savigny?
Joey Savigny seventeen ninety, Pounteau Road. I'm before you this evening to speak about the parking lot. After the Valley Breeze article last Thursday, some residents have reached out to me concerned, they live in the area, about their wells. The Valley Breeze wasn't very clear on how big the parking lot was going to be, where the runoff was going to go and if it was potentially going to affect their wells. Also, if there's going to be any buffers around that parking lot. It was kind of vague, so kind of just looking for some, in some further comments as to what's going on with the parking lot. Are there any studies going on? What's going to happen with that? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to? No, well, you're going to, are you going to do it as part of your presentation or?
Yeah, there's, there's two parts. There is an engineering survey that's in the consent agenda. That's part of our partnership with the Rhode Island Department of Health regarding remediation of the well. And then I will briefly touch on a couple of things regarding the parking lot itself in my report.
Okay. And just for the record, this school committee has not voted on it, has not taken a position on it or anything like that. We are obviously going to go through the Department of Health. Let's see, what's, what else do we have to go through?
Yeah, all the local codes, everything, everything is going to be reviewed and surveyed and public.
DEM is a requirement. And we're going to go through all of that. I mean, it's, it seems like, you know, obviously social media has taken over and comments in the Valley Breeze, but we haven't even addressed anything yet, so. We'll, we will do that at a meeting in public and have a discussion about it. We will have whatever reports. The other thing that, and the other thing that I, you know, I've heard and saw on the internet number of times, and I don't respond, I don't govern by, by social media. But, you know, it, it does bother people to see that, but you know, like the PFASs, while the football field has the PFASs, we've already addressed that. We've addressed it three years ago, but there are people in the community who like to just keep on raising it even though we have, you know, documents from the company that there are no PFASs in that, in that field. The last one, I don't know, but this one, they're on. Sorry if I went off on a little dangerous hand. Moving on, let's see. Is it Robert? Chiardio? Is that right?
Yes.
Wow. Thank you.
Jim Lombardi, Superintendent St. Jean, members of the committee. My name is Robert Carradio. I am from Westerly. There are six pillars of rights, untruthful and unlawful transgender guidance, which is not law, that you must change within your current policy. Boys using the same bathrooms as girls and locker rooms, rooming with girls on overnight field trips, competing with girls athletically, compelled use of pronouns by teachers, and keeping secrets from parents regarding social transitioning of their own kids in school. Those are all allowed in your policy. Are any of you at these tables mandated to share a bathroom with someone of the opposite sex while at your day jobs? Or how about sleep in the same room with someone of the opposite sex on a work trip? Probably not. Why is it okay and mandated for kids to have to do this? Your transgender policy is shameful gaslighting of this district's parents, lying to them to make them think that you have the best interest of all kids at heart. When this policy discriminates against ninety-nine percent of the kids in this district, especially our girls, by putting them in uncomfortable, unsafe and unfair situations. Your job as a school committee is to support and take care of all kids, not just kids who are confused with their sexual identities. You will be held accountable by the people here in North Smithfield. Angelica Fonte Green is lying to you. Do not be afraid of her. Your Title IX policy parrots that of the Biden administration's illegal hijacking rewrite, and it is unlawful rubber stamping of this administration's attempt to erase women, and I will not allow that to happen. Title IX was written to protect women based, from discrimination based on sex, not men pretending to be women. That is not the same thing. I will fight this, I promise you, for as long as it takes. You will be held accountable here as well. No matter how much a boy wants to be a girl, dressed like a girl, act like a girl, he will never be a girl, never. Same as girls who want to be boys. This is true, which is why opponents or proponents of this policy have nothing fact-based or data-driven on which to base any intelligent argument. And why you see the anger and name-calling you'll probably hear after this toward me. All feelings, no fact. I don't care what somebody identifies as. I do care, however, when that affirmation and fallout of that identification places girls and women in unfair, uncomfortable and unsafe positions. I support calling anyone, whatever name he or she wants to be called. However, I will never affirm a lie, which is exactly what calling a boy a girl and a girl a boy is. An outright lie.
You're at three minutes.
May I have just fifteen more seconds?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will never allow you or anyone else to systematically erase our girls and women, never. Get this on your next agenda and change these policies. Eliminate the trans policy as this population deserves the same protection as any other, no more, no less. May God bless the children of North Smithfield and their families, and may he also bless our great country, the United States of America. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next person up is Michael Clifford.
I want, Jim, I had put on the first one for the agenda items, homeschooling, but it really isn't an agenda item because all you're doing is approving a request and that's not what I want to speak to, so.
You have three minutes.
To this, okay.
Speak on whatever you'd like.
And the homeschooling situation, I noticed this night, tonight you have fourteen. And I had a reason to go through the minutes of the meetings for the last year. I was looking for something. And as I started going through, I started seeing the agendas and the minutes and the number of homeschooling requests, and it was staggering. I was, I was amazed when I saw the number of requests that had come in for homeschooling. Is there any type of feedback that you're receiving from parents? I know at one time we spoke about, could you do a survey to parents and find out why they, A, you know, homeschooling their kids instead of allowing them to come in here, or if they're even transferring to another school district? Why are they leaving the school to go to a private school? Is that being done yet or is it still not being done? Because these numbers are unbelievable. And what is your, do you know what your total number is for the homeschooling students?
Am I answering? Yeah, so.
Now, if you have a quick answer for him, you can do that.
Yeah.
Or we can get back.
Homeschooling numbers are front-loaded over the summer. That's when parents put in for their home, put in for homeschooling or renew previously existing homeschooling.
Okay, so this doesn't mean these are being enacted. So once they, every year they have to file a request.
Right, we, we, we've been steadily around twenty-seven.
Well, I thought I saw more requests than that when I went through. I thought it was in the forties.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can send you an email.
Can you give some type of report at some point on the homeschooling and why?
I do, during the October enrollment report, I do go over the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And secondly, with regard to the parking, illegal parking on Providence Pike, the, so I know some people are advocating the parking lot should be expanded to solve that problem, but that's never going to solve that problem totally, because even if you add double the size of that, it's, for a large crowd, it's not going to accommodate the spillover. So could you work with the town council? They've been asking at their meetings to have the police enforce the no parking ordinance for once and for all, and they talked about maybe having a meeting with you people, and is there any action going on there? Are you, do you have an effort underway to try to help with the illegal parking out there?
No one's, no one's asked this to me. I'd be more than happy to me. We do have a, we do have a plan that we're, we're talking about that hopefully will come to the next meeting or the meeting after.
Well, they, they've been asking at the council meeting, Mrs. Hamilton read a prepared statement last, at the last meeting. So if you go to the, not last night's meeting, but the other, we, prior, she read a prepared statement at that meeting calling for the parties to all work together and try to brainstorm and come up with a way to methodically make sure that that didn't occur.
We, we haven't had a physical meeting. We've had a lot of emails going, going around.
Okay.
And, and one of the things we've looked at, you know, there, there have been proposals to put railings along both sides of Providence Pike. Another proposal.
Right, we don't, we don't have to go through them now, but we, we'd be more than happy to me.
Yeah.
Nobody has contacted me. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay.
If, if somebody said something at a public meeting that I didn't see, I don't, I don't, I don't watch the council meeting.
And I couldn't even understand it. I wasn't.
And these are ideas just floating around because we're very aware of it and, and, you know, we, we, we want to.
We do have a solution.
Did anybody happen to go by yesterday when the express football was playing?
No.
I had a friend to go by. I didn't see it myself, but they said there was not a car on the road and they had the cones up all the way down Providence Pike and the people were all parking where they're supposed to park. So it shouldn't be bad to enforce it if we really want to enforce it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is it Leona Zubin?
Yes, Leona Zubin. I live at nineteen eleven Providence Pike, directly across from the proposed new parking lot. After reading Breeze and concerns, our neighbors have concerns regarding the effects of any contamination, if there is a possibility of it contaminating our wells, all of our wells in our front yard. And our concerns are big. We don't want to see the children get any contamin, get contaminated from this or anyone attending the schools here. On this particular Saturday, I don't know if any of you saw, but there was a big game here at the school. And as Mr. Clifford just said, it was amazing. It shocked me because in the last ten years, I have never seen anything like this. I've seen cars parking on both sides of the street constantly, the day, the day games and the night games. So the parking lot on top was full and I said, no, now they're going to be starting parking in the street. They didn't. I came down to go to the store and I noticed the cones that were out that said, no parking down here in the parking lot was a big sign that said parking for these particular people at the games. And it was full. People utilizing the, the path to the school area, to the game area. And it was wonderful. It was a quiet day. Everything went well. There wasn't anyone having to walk down the streets with their children with the possibility of getting injured. And it worked. So I was wondering if you could consider looking at the avenue of putting and improving that parking lot and having that done and utilizing this parking lot that already exists here. There wouldn't be any worries about contaminations of wells, of aquifers, and we could rest easy knowing that there wouldn't be any contamination of our wells. So we hope you will consider that aspect of improving the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Melissa Bubble?
Melissa Bubble, One Socket, Rhode Island. Schools should prioritize the safety and the privacy of all students by maintaining clear and separate facilities for boys and girls. New laws that allow individuals to use bathrooms based on their gender identity rather than biological sex could lead to uncomfortable or potentially unsafe situations. It is crucial to advocate for policy changes such as those proposed by RIDE to ensure that every student feels secure and respected, not just those whose gender identity differs from their biological sex. As a parent of boys, I am concerned about the implications of such laws. It's important to address potential risks and vulnerabilities, including the possibility of boys or girls being targeted inappropriately. My concerns also extend to my families with girls who might also face similar risks. We need to make it clear that enough is enough. It is time to draw a line similar to how Burrerville has done regarding how RIDE that dictates the operations of our schools. If you allow this to pass, are you prepared for what may happen to someone's little girl or little boy? Consider how upset the parent will be and the mental damage it could cause on the victim. Some individuals may exploit this policy to commit unthinkable acts against innocent children. There's a reason that girls, boys, men and women have been separate for years, including in sports. I'm not against transgender individuals. I have friends who are, but I am concerned about the implications of the Title IX for our children. There's already evidence in the news about these potential issues it could create. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Fortin?
Hi, my name is Joanne Fortin. Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. Some of you know me. I was a resident here for about seventeen years. I now reside in Narragansett. I'm a military spouse, retired, military mom and triplet mom. My husband and I raised our children here in North Smithfield from third grade through their senior year in high school. During that time, I dedicated myself to raising good children. Our children played sports, participated in We the People, partook in DECA. They were part of the music program and so much more here, and they're thriving in life. I feel I was a good example to my children. I was a lunch lady here in the school system. And I was affectionately known as the nice lunch lady. I love everybody. It's true. I worked tire, I worked tirelessly with many parents, such as Bill Nangle and Tony Gerton, to raise a hundred and ten thousand dollars back in two thousand and ten to keep sports here. We did that in nine months. I stayed on, on NSA, North Smithfield Athletic Association, for years past my children's graduation. I supported all the fundraising, even running in five K raise each year and winning or coming in the top three in the female age group. I also spent eight years fighting for North Smithfield High School to have a male and female lacrosse team. I am so proud to say that they won both their divisions this year. I can't tell you what that means to me. When I come by that field and there's a boys' football game, a boys' lacrosse game that looks like a football game, I am thrilled. I'm so proud to, okay. So worth all the hard work and dedication to get lacrosse for the athletes here in town. I'm sure you're all wondering, why are you here tonight since your children have graduated and you no longer reside here? Well, I was fighting to keep, while I was fighting to keep sports here in North Smithfield in two thousand and ten and fought for eight years to have lacrosse, the fastest growing sport in America. I was fighting, I wasn't fighting for my children. I was fighting for all the children to come, that will, to come here. The future athletes here in North Smithfield. For this town to be a place where families wanted to move because of the great sports that we offered. When Title IX was passed in nineteen seventy-two, only two hundred and ninety-five thousand girls competed in high school sports in the United States compared to three point six seven million boys. During two thousand and ten and eleven school year, the year that we fought to keep sports here, there are three point two million girls played high school sports and four point five million boys. There were almost no college athletic scholarships for women for forty years. Now almost two hundred thousand women play college sports and many of those athletes get scholarships. My daughter was one of the only female lacrosse players at the time in North Smithfield. If not for Title IX, we would have never had a girls' lacrosse team here in North Smithfield. The male parents knew this. They knew their only way to have a male team was to also have a female team. That's Title IX. I would have never been able to ask for help with fundraising and speak up at my school committees and town council meetings. My daughter most likely would have never played on the Michigan State lacrosse team. I am here tonight to ask you to keep sports safe and fair on the playing field and in the locker room. Do you know how fast a male can whip a lacrosse ball? And do you realize that girls do not wear helmets? Please keep things safe. Thank you. And full disclosure, I'm running for representative House of Representatives here in, in Narragansett District Thirty-four. And my platform is keeping Title IX, keeping children safe in this state. Thank you.
Wendy Becker?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm an associate professor of social work at Rhode Island College, where I teach clinical practice and social policy, including a class on sexual orientation and gender identity. I was also a middle school social worker for many years and the executive director of Youth Pride, a statewide organization for LGBTQ youth. I'm here to support the RIDE guidance for the treatment of trans students. As you likely know, there's a national campaign to target LGBTQ people, trans people in particular. Some engage in message-tested parental rights and child protection talking points with rhetoric that is misleading and untrue. They are not protecting children as children are not in danger. There have been no incidents in our schools in the seven years since implementation of the RIDE guidelines. They are not increasing parental rights. They're simply centering their own viewpoints. Views that are opposed by many parents and opposed by all respected mental health and medical organizations for children and adults, including the American Psychological Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association. Those of us who care about the education of our children must not accommodate these parents who want to impose their views on others. Let me be clear. Education, catering to transphobia and seeking to discriminate against trans students is not only morally wrong and illegal, it's harmful to students' well-being. Transgender students already face enormous challenges. Studies show they are disproportionately affected by bullying, harassment and discrimination in schools. In fact, over eighty percent of LGBTQ students report feeling unsafe at school. This takes a devastating toll, contributing to higher rates of depression, anxiety, substance abuse, truancy and suicide. It's important for me to say that these transgender youth experience difficulties not because of their gender identity and expression, but because of transphobia. This isn't about who they are. This is really about who we are. So we need, we, we need to do all that we can. It's our duty to create safe and inclusive environments and reject policies rooted in transphobia. By doing so, we comply with state law, federal law. We uphold the core values of education, equity, respect and compassion. When transgender students are affirmed and supported in their identities, their mental health, attendance and academic performance all improve. Federal and state law and RIDE guidelines have been enacted based of, on years of evidence-based practices. As a school committee, please continue to follow the law and let facts and research guide your decisions. Do not allow personal prejudices to create public policy. Thank you very much.
It's been three minutes, but if you want an extra fifteen seconds, feel free.
I timed it out and I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, is it Estelle Bubble?
I'm Estelle Bubble. I live in One Socket. I'm also very concerned about the children. You, we send them to school so that you can educate them. And that's what you're supposed to do. We're not supposed to be able to tell, when they come home and say, oh, well, I, I'm a girl today or a boy today and all that. No. They come to school to learn. And I'm on a group of women, grandmas, and we have, we talk. The thing is, is that I ended up getting a CD from Amazon and it's also on YouTube. It's about a wolf in sheep's clothing. They have number one and they have a second one, which is transgender agenda. If you have not seen this, I urge you all to see this. This has been going on for years. Now, now here it is again. It's like history repeating itself. We need to get this to stop. These are our children. We don't, you know, what are we going to do? Use a litter box next? Hello? No. Girls are girls and boys are boys. That's it. Boys use the boys' bathroom, girls use the girls' bathroom. That's the way it's supposed to be. That being said, good night.
Okay, thank you. Let me into three minutes. Uh, please identify.
My name is Steve Alves. I'm a reporter. I do a lot of AP requests, and I wanted to point out that the Attorney General in twenty twenty-three put out clarity on the AP requests, and he was very clear that you cannot tell people they can't submit an AP request by email. And so that policy that person was talking about at the beginning, where he says his, his email requests for AP requests are being ignored or told the assistant person, he does not by law. And, you know, the Attorney General confirmed this, and I also brought up the press release he sent out in twenty twenty-three about this, and I've talked to him about this in person as well. So it's a very important thing for everybody to have in records and open meetings and
We agree with you.
Government accessibility, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I have no more names. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Want to recess or?
Yeah, uh, well.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to recess for two minutes. Motion made in a second. Seconded. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. We're in recess. Go ahead. Uh, we're back in, uh, open session. Uh, moving on to consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or take anything, and want to take anything off the consent agenda? Or have any comments?
Chair, I have a comment, but I'd also, before I comment, I'd like to remove one item from the agenda. Um, the, the, I believe it's item two. And item two, subsection eight, approve the kids' club lease agreement through two thousand and twenty-six. I'm throwing out a, um, statement of conflict of interest. It may not be one, but I, I do some work with, uh, at the State House with one of the reps who operates a portion of kids' clubs, sort of a bunch of portion. Um, I did speak to her yesterday about this thing. I'm going to
That's fine, good.
So I asked, picking up the consent calendar.
And did you want to say something about, uh, item number four?
Ye- yes, very basically, as you know, I don't, I don't speak during the open, the open session, but I just wanted to address on the homeschooling requests. You know, the initials are just down there. This is something I actually looked at it into a few years ago, and a lot of us know this. Is a parent can ask, a parent guardian, responsible adult can ask to homeschool a child, and they don't have to give a reason for it. They can just, they can ask for it. They, it's a, it's an automatic thing. And in doing so, I actually looked at some of the, a number of court cases, and these, uh, the limit, attempts to limit the homeschooling options and to get too much information from them, um, have been challenged and won by the homeschooling opponents in that very, I, I mean, I'm saying a lot of, not every challenge, but an awful lot, if you look them up legally, you'll find a lot of cases. So, um, I'm not saying that we can't ask do, and gather data on, you know, how many there are, but again, someone can just say, I feel the superintendent confirmed, they can say, we just want to homeschool them. We don't have, we can't say why, or maybe we can, but they don't have to tell us. It's, it's a right they have.
We, we have parents who have kids in, in this, in the district, and for one reason or another, they may decide to homeschool. And a number of them I've had a conversation with because I helped work with them and the schools helped work with them, uh, with their child and specific needs, and in the end, they decided the best thing to do would be to homeschool. But we do have conversations with parents.
Yeah.
You know?
But correct.
Because we work with them while they're here. But we also have a cadre of parents who are homeschooling, who have never set foot in North Smithfield schools. That's just what they do.
And that's their legal right. Their right, so. I'm saying, I guess it's just not an easy, you don't, it's hard to get data, if you will, on this matter, because it's, it's, it's protected by federal law what, as to the rights, and if they can, they can do this. I do have some, that's all I understand. Thank you.
Anybody else want to think anything else?
Just wanted to, um, acknowledge that you started to get on the policies. I know there are so many policies in North Smithfield, and that's, that's a difficult thing to try and really catch up on, and I want to kudos for starting to tackle this.
Oh, wait till we start going in with the hard ones. Oh, you're not going to be on the school committee for the entire year. That's why you pushed to have this done.
Well, thank you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented except for number eight. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight. I'll entertain, uh, a motion to approve item number eight. Motion made. Is there a second?
Right.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Connell has refused.
Thank you.
Refused. Moving on to reports, Superintendent.
I'm going to show you some pretty pictures.
Oh, look at that picture.
So last, last school committee meeting, I shared some of the works in progress. We have renovations around the, the, the district. Here's a little before and after of the new gymnasium at the high school. And you can see, well, that was while the floor was being taken up. That's the original floor. Here's the new floor. We have our striping, our painting, um, the, uh, district logo is in the center. The thing we're waiting for now, oh, all the walls have been painted, the ceiling has been painted, there's some new lighting that's in there. Uh, we're just waiting for the bleachers, and now they will be delivered in September. But that's not going to stop, um, PE classes from using the gymnasium when school begins. Uh, the only sport that it's really affecting is volleyball, but that's being moved over to the middle school. Uh, you know, so to, to, to house, uh, fans. So the bleachers, when they come in, they will be green to match the North Smithfield green color and the striping, so it's, it's going to look fantastic. The high school library is being renovated, and I had posted some earlier pictures of it in progress. I took this today, uh, either actually this afternoon or tomorrow, all the new rugs go in, the new carpets, and they will be in mixture of gray, green, and gold. Um, the other thing that's going in is replacing this old furniture that we have. Uh, and new modern furniture will be put in, um, in a space that the, the, uh, library can be reconfigured for any, any use, any need, any purpose. Um, so it's going to look much brighter, much cleaner. There were bookshelves on the back wall over here, which hid the glass, which had their, their rooms behind there that we're going to utilize. Uh, a bookcase is going to go on the bottom half. Uh, but, um, again, I'll, I'll, I'll be posting some pictures on Facebook when we get the, the library finished. One of our CTE computer labs, right, started out as this. Dingy and gray with old furniture. And new floor, new ceiling, new furniture, um, a lot of the excess stuff has been removed. It's clean, it's modern, it's, um, ready to go for our business CTE students. Elementary playground. This is the early childhood playground. And you can see, what was, what was there before was no play equipment. I mean, there, there were little ride-on toys and things like that. And there was this, this really eaten-up old phone, whatever it was, uh, under, underfoot. But now, uh, there's, there's a, a, a pavement over on this side. This is a nice soft rubberized, um, surface under the new piece of, uh, play equipment.
Um, does that have any PF ashes on it? Oh, somebody will say.
No, it does not. I didn't show you this before, but we've reorganized and are renovating the middle school library. And so the bookcases that were all taken up, this area over here, have actually been moved back towards the wall into discreet, um, um, uh, cataloging, reading areas. We have, again, that new furniture is coming in, and you can see this seating area is one. Uh, you can see on the lower picture here how the bookcases look off the middle of the floor and against the walls. Uh, and new furniture is coming in, which, unlike the old heavy stuff that was almost impossible to move if you were in like the fifth or sixth grade, um, you know, or if you were old and you had a bad back. Uh, the new furniture is going to be designed again, just like at the high school library, uh, to as flex space. Uh, they, that, that this library can be configured and reconfigured however, uh, the school, the teacher, or the class needs. And then, one of the things that I, I just wanted to, to share, um, about the Valley Breeze article and what was on social media regarding the parking lot expansion. Last meeting, I put a picture up of the, uh, parking expansion. To be honest, I didn't think it would be taking on a life of its own. It was an illustration of what was yet to come. And the diagram I shared, uh, was the initial diagram from the design build RFP, uh, bid response. And it was and is subject to change. That's what design build is. Uh, all the survey and permitting, they are parts of the design build. They will be done. Uh, any parking approved, uh, any approved parking expansion plans will follow all code and Department of Health requirements. And, you know, but, we actually have an inside track with the Department of Health because we're working in partnership with them, um, over the PF remediation. So you know, we have, we have the expertise and all the reviews will pay close. Uh, the other thing that I, I wanted to point out is that the price that was um, published online and in the paper was three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. That was an itemized, itemized list of everything in the RFP. That's not the actual, um, price. You know, there's the value engineered piece of it, which wasn't reported, and that comes in for the whole project is two hundred and nine thousand. The other thing that's not, wasn't reported, that that two hundred and nine thousand is eligible for ride reimbursement of thirty-five percent, which will come back to us, that we can then, uh, invest in further approved projects. So I just wanted to clarify some of, some of the concerns that were out there, and certainly, you know, when we heard from the neighbors, and yeah, I mean, obviously, we're, we're, we want to be good neighbors, uh, good community members, and we do have the means to, uh, remediate, uh, what was hap, you know, the, the, the PFAS levels. But the best part was last week, over at NSCS was kindergarten camp. And so a group of students got to come in and experience kindergarten and meet their teachers and go off for recess and eat snacks. And I want to complain, this child here, she had the best lunch. And I was talking to her about putting, uh, putting some claims onto, uh, uh, some of the things if she didn't eat it. And I come back around and the things that I mentioned, gone. She ate the strawberries that was in her packet. I was eyeing the strawberries. I wasn't going to take it, but I was telling her, those look delicious. She ate them before I could possibly get to them. So, uh, but that's what we're looking forward to. Uh, we have, uh, girls' volleyball has been in practicing at the, uh, uh, gymnasium over here. And it's just so good to see teachers coming in. They're excited, they're putting their rooms together, and, and, and it's nice to see kids coming back, and so we truly look forward to next.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. Uh, moving on to, um, item number four, um, which is informational purposes. Does anybody have any? Any questions or?
I have, I have a couple of things. So first on the list, Amanda Bean, athletic director. We thank her for her year, and to be honest, a point-six position could not contain her ideas and enthusiasm. She came in with, with, with such passion and drive, uh, organizational ability like I've never seen before. I mean, you, you've got to see a piece of it while we were going through replacing the uniforms. She, she was just marvelous. But like I said, a point-six could not contain her. I don't think a one-point-oh could have been given. That's, that's the, the level at which she functioned. So we, we wish her all the best in her new one-point-oh position. So, but, having said that, I'd like to introduce Chris Branch, who is our new athletic director. He is sitting right there. And he, he comes to us.
Yep.
With tremendous coaching experience, AD experience. And he was just, uh, uh, inducted into the Rhode Island Gridiron Hall of Fame uh, for excellence in coaching and how many teams he's led to playoffs and Super Bowls and, um, he talked about energy. He started working before he even started working. So he was already hitting the ground running and getting himself caught up before he even met with me and we signed the contract. And since then, he's just been around all the time, uh, meeting with the coaches and just, just really looking forward to working with them and, and seeing what, what, what he can bring for us, uh, this coming year. Okay?
Great.
The, also, I want to wish Emily Vincent, she was our dean of students here at the middle school. I want to wish her well. Uh, she was just wonderful with the kids, very caring, uh, but she wanted to go back to the classroom, which everybody fully respects. However, we had a surprise. Somebody applied for the job that we could not have been more happy, and we welcome back Rachel Sapp.
She just couldn't leave us, huh?
No. In, in fact, uh, in, in fact, you want to talk about couldn't leave us? Clarissa Russell. I think it was a year ago, I was saying nice things about her because she resigned. And was it a year ago or two? It was a year ago. And and, and she had another teaching opportunity, and guess what? It's that North Smithfield boomerang, and we had an open, opening for a math interventionist here at the middle school. And she came right back and we caught her. And we, again, could not be more happy to have her back.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Any further comments? Um, moving on to old business, um, Lisa, do you have any updates or anything, I mean, other than what you handed out? Okay, anything else?
New here, who's getting appointed? Anybody new here? Nope, nope. Okay, so we got everybody.
Any other business?
She won't leave anybody out.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I asked.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.